Ready to go? Okay. I call the December 9th, 2019 City Council Committee, the whole meeting to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Burton.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Alderman Freeman will be absent. McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Welcome, everybody. We have an interesting agenda tonight. First up, we're going to invite our special guest, Jack Staluski, to come up and make his presentation. Jack, you want to come on up? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jack Staluski.
Hold on just a second. There you go.
I live with my mom and my dad, Mike and Dan. I am nine years old and I'm in the fourth grade in Washington Academy. My principal's name is Mrs. Brenner. She's real nice. I like to build projects over 50 batches at Home Depot, win fishing derbies, make like sliced paper mache's, animals, snowy owls, foxes, ant ears crocs, presentates, educate, galbor, and rack out library branches, set my personal collections, fossils, minerals, and toys in exhibits, do my lounge for kids in need, swim, write cartoons, enjoy my own illustration, understand space and stars, go to church, junior usher at First Baptist Church, pastor grant, and volunteering. I volunteer as least as a trail motor at Hawthorne Hills Nature Center in Elgin, Illinois, and logged at least 80 hours a year for the last four years. I created programs and do whatever I am told to do. Here I began learning about polio gardens and monarchs and their importance to the ecosystem. When I read about reducing population of monarchs in Illinois, I decided to get involved. I began raising my own milkweed to attract monarchs. After the monarchs lay an egg, I raise them in my indoor habitat until it emerges as a butterfly. For three years, I have done this in classrooms, even my previous teachers, Mrs. Holst and Mrs. Brown, let be raised monarchs in their classrooms. I called leg, I called, I called from eggs to legs. These teachers are real nice, too. I, I presented for, I presented for three years at classrooms in my school to educate students and teachers about monarchs, their habitat. Over 150 students have participated in raising of monarchs in their classrooms. One year, we tagged them to monitor their migration, good times. Recently, in September 2019, as I was bringing a new 2019-2020 Illinois Highway map, which featured the monarch butterfly, I dot used a, a picture of a swallowtail instead of a, of a monarch. Oops. I asked my grandma if I dot has some, has a wrong photo. Maybe they are having trouble identifying milkweed, too. If there is no milkweed, monarch cannot lay eggs. It's the only plant the monarch caterpillar feeds on after they hatch. Can we connect I dot? I asked my grandma's, my grandma said, hmm, okay. When we sent I dot an email, I told them all about my monarch experience and my problems with the photo. I told them that this photo could not possibly be a monarch caterpillar because of how it looks and it's not milkweed. I explained their bill for photo was none other than a swallowtail. I know because I raised those, too. I waited patiently. I sent them three mail, three emails in total. About, about a month went by. I dot wrote me back. They agreed the photo was wrong and thanked me for finding the error and sent me milkweed and other seeds. I feel better knowing that I am, that may I help the ecosystem by informing I dot that cap, monarch caterpillars are only found on milkweed. This way, they will have a better understanding of super importance of milkweed in that nine year old's care. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Alderman? Department head? Yes.
How many, how many butterflies have you raised, do you think?
I'm about in total, so like probably 350.
I wanted to know how you tag your butterflies. How do you mark them?
So we take them by sticker and we put them on their, like their right, um, that the outside of the right down feather. We put the tag on that and then they're not hurt, they're not, they're nothing, nothing. It just feels normal to them and then they fly away normally.
Anybody else in the audience have questions?
What's your favorite butterfly?
Um, I say the swallowtail because I raised them, too. They have, um, the males have blue and then the, no, the males have the yellow and then the females have blue.
Any, any other questions? Yes, sir.
You said you tagged them so you could track them. How far can you track them?
Um, they go all the way to Mexico.
Yes.
What can we do to help, you know, raise the population of monarchs in Illinois? Is there anything that we can do?
Um, you could not chop down milkweed. Um, they produce seed pods, so spread those, too. Hmm? Let me just show you the map right now. So it's a third picture of them. Yeah. Okay. So it's that one right there and then that's a, that's a monarch and that's a swallowtail. You can see the big, the big, see the milkweed stem is thicker and the swallowtail is, stem is thinner because they eat, they'll fennel and, they eat dill and fennel, so that's why. Um, I got milkweed seeds for IOU from, from my garden. I produced these milkweed seeds from my garden and looked, when I, when I first raised them, I take my milkweed and cut some, cut some leaves and they love my milkweed. But the wild milkweed, they, milkweed, they kind of don't like it, but they kind of like it, but not really. That's why I'm giving, giving, giving you my seeds that they like.
How do we plant that?
Um, you see there's feathers on this? Well, you just put them in the air and they'll start floating. Yeah.
Yes, I gave it to the third gentleman here and we'll have to write IOUs to everyone.
We can share. We, we can share.
Okay. Very good.
And thank you, Jack. That was refreshing and wonderful. Okay, next we'll start with public comment and we have Jeff Carlisle here and his subject is taxes. Mr. Carlisle, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Jeff Carlisle. I live in Belvidere, 203 Secretaryate's Way. I'm here to talk about the agenda that was on the, uh, the item on the agenda was talk about additional taxes. Previously, there was additional taxes set up for gambling and fuel for our pensions. Understand it and agree with it. This new tax was for the same thing and the library. So I'm having a problem with where was the information from the last taxes? Where did that come to? Where was our shortfall? Where's the measurements of that information? Where's the data of the information? I can't make a decision or I can't be acceptable to that unless I have the data. And I hope every man and woman on the board would look at that information. If it's available, if it's not available, you're uninformed. That's all I had. Thank you.
Next, we're going to introduce the folks that were kind enough to put themselves forward to fill the empty aldermanic slot and to be democratic. We'll do this alphabetically. So, Mr. Arivellum, would you come up and speak to the council? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I reside at 342 West Jackson Street. As many of you may know, or a few, I was an alderman previously. I'd like to join again to do the good I was doing, be involved in the community. Any questions they had, I was trying to inform them by asking some questions with Becky in finance or, or Gina about different things, trying to help them to get it to the correct person. I don't know, the more I get involved in government, the more I love it, the way you help people and because they're very grateful. I've gotten a few calls and I try to talk to them personally, go to their house to make it more personal, instead of just over the phone. Uh, I don't know, I just want to keep on engaging more into the community and just give them more. This community has given me so much. Got here in 2006, 2007, I moved to Belvidere and ever since, I've called it home and I'm going to continue to call it home until I retire. And I don't know, just trying to figure different ways how to bring businesses, different businesses into the community. I know there's a lot of Spanish stores and I'm trying to have them more involved in the community, except just them thinking about, they feel less, not involved with the barriers of communication sometimes, trying to have those gaps. I don't know, there's just lots of things I think I can bring to the community again. I've been involved in R S A C, Rockford Sexual S law Counseling. It's very important to have money going to those funds. Other communities, I've been, um, U L A C, been involved in that as well, trying to stay in touch with different organizations, trying to figure out how to bring those organizations together instead of having different funds for those, trying to accumulate this into one pocket and have more information instead of every different organization competing for the same funds. I don't know what else to say. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Arivellum.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Next up, we have Natalie Mulhall. Natalie, would you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Natalie Mulhall, 120 West Boone Street. Mayor Chamberlain, thank you for inviting me here tonight. City council members, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. As I said, my name is Natalie Mulhall and I live on West Boone and Ward Two. My husband, Tim, is here with me tonight. We have five sons. They are all invisible tonight because they are very busy doing their own thing. Three of them at work, one is at a band concert and one is at cheer practice. We've lived in Belvidere for over 22 years. It was our first home that we ever bought and we're still in the same house in the same neighborhood. We came here because of the affordable housing, the small town charm, and the diversity that Belvidere had to offer. All of our sons have attended public schools. They've participated in many community programs with the YMCA, the Park District. They've spent countless hours doing sports in the community through the Park District and B Y B. They've enjoyed the parks and, um, swimming at the park pool. Belvidere's been a really great place to raise our sons. They range in age from 23 to 14. Our last three are in high school now. We not only live here, I work here as well. As a Realtor, I get to talk to people from all over considering making Belvidere their home. It's my job every day, not just to sell a house or a home to someone, it's my job to sell a community. And Belvidere is really easy to sell. I live here, I work here, I participate, and it couldn't be easier to sell people in this community. It's been my pleasure to be involved in great community organizations. Currently, I'm treasurer of the Belvidere Board of Realtors and next month, I'll be joining the Board of Directors for United Way of Boone County. I've been an election judge in Precinct Six for several years under Julie Stapler. I currently sit on the Boone County Regional Planning Commission as the vice chairman. I'm also on the Agricultural Easement and Farmland Protection Commission. That's probably the longest one. I've also volunteered my time with many other organizations. One that I really love was the VIP program, Volunteer and Police Service. Marty back there that works the camera, every, uh, meeting you have here is on that and we all know, or most of you know, how much money that organization saves this city every year. It's, it's really important. I've also been on the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission. I volunteer time for things like Belvidere Youth Baseball, Habitat for Humanity. I have a real vested interest in this community. I really hope someday that at least maybe some of my sons will come back to Belvidere and raise their families here and make it their forever home. There's something that I found being involved and I really think the key to feeling like you belong someplace is, is being involved and I feel like I belong in Belvidere. I love to be a part of the future growth. I believe we have an energetic community and exceptional citizens and it would be really an honor to work with the mayor and the city council members to help keep the positive momentum of the city moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Walter Stevens. Walter, please come up.
Yep.
How are you this evening, sir?
I'm good.
Good.
And you?
Good. State your name and address for the record, please.
Walter Stevens, 1013 West Perry Street in Belvidere. Mr. Mayor and all the beautiful people, it's a pleasure being here tonight to put my, throw my hats in on the table for this Ward Two. First, you ask, where's Walter Stevens? Almost everybody knows Walter Stevens. Okay. I was born and raised in Jamaica, West Indies. I came to Belvidere in 1968, where I live at 520 West Seventh Street with my uncle Harold Williams. From there, after getting my feet in the ground, I expanded. Now, I work for Dorn Transfer in Rockford, Illinois as a driver's truck and sales. I, I am a retired Teamsters. I have dedicated my life and most of my free time in volunteering. I am on the board for Habitat for Humanity. I am a precincts committee man and I'm, I also do meals and wheels and I'm also, when the R S V P were here for retirees, people serving retirees, I was also on that board. I'm well acquainted with the problems that are going on in Belvidere and I think I can help. There are things that I can do to make this town a little bit better, even though Belvidere is a wonderful place. Forty years ago, 50 years ago, you could go downtown and sit back and count the cars as they go by. Today, they're passing minute by minute so we can see that we are all under growth. People that are here, I'm a registered voter. I am with the Democratic Party. I'm voted Democrat, I'm proud to say. But that will not lead me, say, well, different from anyone else because we all have to have a different opinion in order to live in this country, in this world. We can't all be the same, but we can work together. And if we work together, we can make things better. And thus, all I'm asking is for your, for you all to give me a chance to prove who Walter is and what Walter can do. Thank you. If any one of you guys have a question, please feel free to ask. I'm also, wait a minute, I'm on the Vestry for Holy Trinity Church, senior warden down there also. But what? Anyone have anything to say or ask, have a question? Please feel free to ask. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Walter. Appreciate you coming tonight. So, next up, we have Stephen Wild. Stephen, come on up. State your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Stephen Wild, 3909 Bluff Drive, Belvidere, Illinois. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, it is an honor to speak for you, before you this evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Since I've become aware that my ward has become vacant, I'm used at the idea of my own involvement in whatever process was needed in correcting this. I was concerned that the, with the thought that somebody that was granted so much responsibility by their constituents hasn't been trying to prove their worth to the city. Then I considered the very real possibility that for whatever reason, they had just lost the capacity to fulfill those duties. This is what I consider to be most likely, not having any knowledge of Alderman Borowitz's situation, whatever his reason, the ward was vacant and we cannot allow that to continue. The musings became determination and here we are this evening. The letter the mayor sent me, and let me, let me first say, receiving a letter from the mayor was an honor of its own. I've never received a letter from a mayor before. I'm sure you all have and I hope this to be the beginning of many positive interactions with our great mayor. That being said, the letter informed me of my opportunity to address this body and to exhibit my qualifications for this position. In the measure of my experience with governance, owning a business, or any sort of lottery, I have none. These tangible examples, I fear I fall woefully short. What I have to offer this body is my lifetime of experience of hard work, paying bills, living within our means, and raising a family of three kids and now grandchildren, having unparalleled love of civics, sociology, politics, and yes, our great city of Belvidere. And what I think is my most important qualification, I deeply want this job. I want the trust of this council and this mayor to faithfully and thoughtfully execute the duty of this honorable position as alderman of the second ward of my hometown, to be educated on each and every issue that we have in front of us, to vote thoughtfully and independently on the very issues that affect every one of the proud people of this city, to listen and to interact with my constituents as to be able to truly understand their concerns, to gain the trust of the voters of the second ward, and to be a working part of the development of this city. I was born here, St. Joseph's Hospital. I was the la, I was in the last graduating class of the old junior high. I was a proud buck as we won state championships and grew as a diverse community. Without the problems seen in surrounding communities and schools, we've always been a welcoming city, welcoming to hard work, honesty, faith, and assimilation to what it meant to be from Belvidere. It doesn't mean that we haven't always been tough on making sure that our city is safe and that our families do not have to live in fear of our neighborhoods being crime ridden. I applaud our teams of first responders in making this a safe environment for our families. Thank you. I was raised here, I've been disciplined here, I've been rewarded here. I've been provided many opportunities from this city, many chances to be a better son, husband, and father, just the opportunity to be a better me. I believe that I owe this city my hard work to ensure it remains a welcoming and fostering community that offers these opportunities moving forward for everyone, no matter what differentiates them from each other. If they're from Belvidere, they're one of us. Their kids are our kids. At this body's place and time, their future is our future. To think that I have the opportunity to work with this council, who's already been part of a great resurgence in Belvidere, is a staggering honor. This council has been paramount in our development. Surrounding communities are taking, talking about our downtown and this body's commitment to growth. Thanks to social media and word of mouth, Belvidere is becoming a great place for our investors and opportunity. I want to be part of that moving forward. I want to work within this body to maintain our standard of living and supporting this future. However, not betraying what makes this a great place to live, Belvidere's long traditions of family, faith, and success, the qualifications that I would bring to this body are intangible. What I lack in experience, I meet with passion. What I lack in qualifications, I meet with determination. And what I lack in credentials, I meet with the love of my hometown, our home, Belvidere. Many of you have served for many terms, some just a few. I don't have taxes to support this, but I thought many of you have been where I am today. Perhaps not the most qualified applicant on paper, but holding an unmatched determination and love for this city. I relish the chance to work and learn from your combined knowledge and your wisdom of this great city's council. I would be and am honored with your consideration for this position. I guarantee that I won't let you down. Thank you. Did anybody have any questions?
What do you do?
I am an M A for weight loss clinic. I also call bingo in various different establishments in Rockford and Belvidere. I am an officiant and I've married about a dozen couples. I volunteer every chance I get. I've done Meals on Wheels. I currently volunteering at Braveheart Stables out there on 173. It's a wonderful place. If you guys have ever been there, they always need volunteers. So if anyone's looking to volunteer, Braveheart will take you in and it's great. You get to work with horses and shovel horse stuff. So it's, 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 it's simple work. There's, there it is. Yeah, it's, anything else? Thank you very much for this.
Thank you very much for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, there you have it. Under item C, the city attorney will explain what we need to do because of our shortened time period because of the holiday season.
As the council probably knows, there's a local rule, it's not a state law, but it's a local rule that was adopted many years ago before my time here, that requires all matters of city business to go to committee the whole first before it goes to a full city council. There's an exception to that rule, that the city council can waive that rule by a simple majority vote. Rather than surprise you with that motion next Monday night, when the mayor would like to make his appointment for your consideration, to fill the vacancy, it made sense to make you aware of that tonight, put it on the agenda tonight. It's not required that be on the tonight's agenda, but we thought we'd do that, so you're aware that we'll be asking you to waive that committee meeting or the committee rule. The reality is, you've heard all the applicants this evening anyway, and then consider the mayor's appointment next week. So, if you're acquiescent to that, the proper motion would be a motion to waive section two dash eighty-eight of the City of Belvidere Municipal Co. as it relates to the appointment to fill the vacancy for Ward Two Alderman. Keep in mind that if we don't do that, we're pushing the appointment out sometime to January.
Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman. Radcliffe, questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Snow.
So, at this point, we don't know, ordinarily, at the committee level, we would find out what the mayor's pick is and move forward, or no?
And if it passes, it works both ways. Additional questions or comments? Alderman Stevens.
Now, if we pass this, it says, "All matters in city business shall be referred to the appropriate committee as designated by the mayor unless the city council shall otherwise provide." So, that means we would go around us voting on this, and then it would just be an appointment by the mayor without the city council's consideration.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. All it does is takes away the committee requirement. The city council will still have to vote on the appointment, give their advice and consent. That's, that is what would be before the council next Monday night.
So, the sequence would be this. It would be my intention that in your packets on Thursday, you will have a letter of appointment for my choice. It comes back to the council for affirmation of that choice. If you read the rest of that, it will tell you what happens if we approve or if we don't approve. The idea is it's a thirty, thirty-day timeframe, usually from the time somebody resigns. The issue was when we got the resignation, we didn't have Thanksgiving, and we don't have, we have a fifth Monday meeting. An option would be, if, to do it without passing this particular vehicle, would be to have a meeting on the thirtieth. So, it would be January before we finished with this, and I thought all of you would like to have somebody sitting in a seat. You have the first right of refusal. If my appointment does not pass, then we have to take the next steps, which are detailed in that piece. Alderman Snow, then Alderman Crawford.
So, likes ordinances, there's a ten-day waiting period. Is there a ten-day waiting period on this, or anything like somebody in the majority changing their vote two weeks later deal? Throwing that out there, just so we all know, so we're all on the same sheet.
There is, it's not an ordinance, there's no ten-day waiting period. In fact, that doesn't even affect most ordinances, to be honest with you. That only implies that cases create a penal violation, for example, fine, or public service work, cases involving expenditures, those kinds of things. So, in theory, the appointment is effective as soon as it's consented to and upon the swearing in of that individual in the office.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. Hearing not all is in favor of approval of moving this ahead, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Burton?
No.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Nay.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Five in favor?
So, is that classified? Okay. We will, we'll see my appointment in your packets, and we will bring it back for council approval next Monday. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for the interest in the city. I think you all made nice presentations. Okay, next up, under report of officers, boards, and special committees, building, planning, and zoning unfinished business, we have none. Building, planning, and zoning new business, under A, we have an intergovernmental agreement between Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority and the city of Belvidere. This is simply an update of the original agreement that we signed.
The mayor's correct. I was actually surprised when the land bank asked for this modification, because the original agreement contains the authority which they're requesting this modified agreement. Essentially, what they want to make clarify is their ability to use our authority to declare a house abandoned. What that involves is, if the house has been vacant for several years, taxes have been unpaid for at least two years, and there's been no water to the property for over a year, then they can go to court and have the court declare the property abandoned. If in fact it's abandoned, then they can get title to it and clean it up and put it back on the rolls. We actually have one case that I filed that's pending right now, utilizing the same statute. The only thing this agreement does is it clarifies that they're going to pay the cost for that and go forward with it, and then they get to sell the house when they're done. So, really, it's just clarification or for the light upon the existing agreement that this council already approved.
Motion to approve. Alderman Snow, second. Also, I cut that. Crawford, Alderman Snow.
So, I see on the last page, there are, appears to be three parcels that are attached to this approval?
Uh, yeah, those are actually three pins that they're probably asking for, I had time for your clarification on that. That exhibit was not attached, the original version I reviewed, but the, those three parcels are parcels that were identified through the planning department, the building department, myself, as being eligible to be declared abandoned. So, it's parcel to be moving forward on.
They're the reason for the clarification, so we can move ahead on these. And I don't know if all of you remember this, but I think we spoke to, I spoke to this before. We received an additional $250,000 grant from the state. We are now looked at as the number one land bank in the state. The leadership that John Wolfe has shown in doing this, and in cooperation with hashing things out with the Realtors Association, we're moving forward on trying to take care of blight as fast as we possibly can.
I was just going to say, yeah, we proposed four properties. The land bank, they chose three. The fourth one is the one that Attorney Drell referenced as the city filing on their own.
Additional questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Alderman Frank had a question.
Okay. Alderman Frank?
I was just going to say, the house on netty, 1,000 netty, I've had problems with that ever since I've been elected. So, four and a half years I've been dealing with that. That's a mess. So, I'm glad that's on the list.
Yes, it is a mess. All those in favor, Alderman Stevens.
The only thing I forget is who determines who takes these property, properties over for rehab, because I've always been against any kind of an investor doing it. I've more been in favor of a couple redoing this. I'm not in favor of any investors trying to make a buck off any of this.
The way the land bank works is if they acquire a title to property through the abandoned property process, and that's the land bank that's funded by the grants that the mayor's talking about, they're the ones that actually do the work, or contract for the work to be done. And once that work is done, then they would put it on the market and use those sale proceeds to replenish their coffers, to buy additional abandoned properties and fix those up.
Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approval of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds unanimous to me. Under number three, public works unfinished business, we have none. Under number four, public works new business, we have none. Under five, other, we have the appointment of Lori Mann to the Idaho Public Library Board of Trustees. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, sounds unanimous to me. Next up, under B, we have a discussion of new telephone system, questions and answers. You fellows want to come up? Gentlemen, good to see you this evening. Would you just like to introduce yourselves to the council?
Thank you. My name is Pat Malley. I'm a lieutenant with Boone County Sheriff's Office. I'm in charge of the 911 Center, IT, and records. Part of my duty is also involve the public safety building. This is our consultant, Dave Wilson, with Wilson Consulting. He helped us out with the loan project. This is Joe Shadden. He is IT supervisor at the sheriff's office.
And the city.
And the city. So, about a year ago, we had been having some issues with our phone system up at the public safety building. It actually was extended countywide. We're all on the same phone system. So, we moved forward with getting a consultant and looking at some different areas and what we needed to do to get the phone system up and running and back on, on track. Dave helped us out here. We spoke to some different areas, found out what would work for everybody. As the discussion started, we started involving possibly the city coming aboard. We met with the mayor, talked to him about that, and some what would work with them. As we proceeded, we started putting together the RFP, and we received that back. It's probably been about six or eight weeks ago now. We are ready to move forward with that. The county does not have a choice on this matter. Our phone system is already on borrowed time. So, we are really stuck with this, and as we move forward, this would be something we want to know if the city would be interested in coming aboard with us also. I'm going to kind of defer back to Dave here to kind of go through some of the technical stuff of the, of the phone, the RFP, and what it involves.
Thank you, Pat. I'm Dave Wilson, Wilson Consulting. I've been involved in the phone system project with the county for several months now. Our job was really to try to uncover the requirements for the county's telephone system, and then it was stated that the city might be interested in participating in the project in order to achieve certain efficiencies and certain additional services that the community might enjoy. And so, with that, we had talked to the city to get their input, and we took a look at the city's existing phone system and incorporated, you know, all of these considerations into a request for proposal. Basically, the request for proposal cited a phone system that would serve the county and the city as one single phone system, so that a resident calling one department within either the city or the county could easily be transferred to any other department in the city or the county. So, there would be no more need to tell someone they had to hang up and make a different, you know, call to another department and essentially start over again. The other benefit that we thought the city and county would enjoy would be some uniformity in the system and a single point of contact for servicing, and ease of administration. Joel would be the primary person there, so that one person could make changes as would be required by any user, whether it was in the city or the county. And so, with that, we came up with, you know, we came up with the design incorporating those ideas and procured proposals, and one of them clearly was the least expensive. And I might, I might also say the configuration sort of bolstered the survivability of the city system inasmuch as if a link went down between sites, the site would not be without phone service. So, for example, a fire station, if the link between the main system and that site failed for whatever reason, the fire department would be survivable. There would be a call processor located there, and they could continue to make and receive calls. So, I think that's my very high-level view. And if anyone has any questions? Yes?
Are you going with Frontier Telecom?
Telecom Innovations Group was considerably less expensive. And they, you know, they both, I might say, they were both excellent proposals, but just Telecom Innovations Group turned out to be the least expensive choice.
Ms. Dobbin, would you speak to the cost analysis comparison and what we have now and what this will provide?
What I was going to mention is, as far as the public safety building goes, we really don't have a choice. We are responsible for 50% of the cost sharing for public safety employees and the building and structure. So, if the county is moving to this system, which includes all the PSB numbers, we are on the hook for half of that. So, what you need, what I think we need to talk about more today is whether to bring the rest of the city into that as well, which we'd be talking about the additional 37 phones, if I'm correct. It's 37 phones that sit outside of the PSB and county structure that we would be able to incorporate into the rest of the system. As far as price goes, we talked about the monthly cost that we're currently paying, which is about $682 a month to IP communication, and it is, I think you're still maybe waiting to get the final numbers, but it was our understanding that our monthly cost was going to be less than it currently is.
Would you comment on that?
That's, that's sound. I can't speak to exactly how much less. You know, I won't, it won't cut your bill in half, but it would be a noticeable decrease in the monthly cost. In addition, and the reason, primary reason for that is that with both systems together, you can share those telephone company services. So, you don't need quite so many as you would if it was, you know, a single system here and a single system here. There's an economy of scale.
And the other thing to mention, too, is, as far as the city goes, we don't need new phones. We're able to use our current phones, because we just purchased a ITel system five years ago, and we're able to use those phones with this new system. So, we're not buying any new phones.
Attorney Drell?
One of the issues we have run into, and I'll actually be coming back to you for further, perhaps, probable collaboration IT infrastructure needs in the future. The phone system we purchased came through our current vendor, and it's a voice-over network call phone system, which is the same as which is being proposed. Our phone system runs over fiber, just like the one that's going to be proposed is. However, our current phone system goes through our third-party provider and then through Winnabeau County IT as the current ISP or service provider. For the last eight months, this worked pretty well, but there have been periods of time where it would just, we'd lose calls, drop calls, it just simply wouldn't work for a day, two hours, 45 minutes, whatever the time might be. And we had serious problems with our reliability in that phone system. For City Hall, that's distressing, but the fire department's also on that phone system. And my original thought process had been, well, they've got 911. They don't use the phone system. They call the radio. Turns out, a lot of people actually pick up the phone number and call the fire, fire department for help, and calls weren't going through. So, I hadn't figured out a back way around, around that, where I would forward to a cellphone. That's hodgepodge. This would alleviate a lot of those problems or all those problems. The second part is, if City Hall loses power, the phone system goes down. PSB has backup generator, so that would not be the case. So, you're getting redundancy that way also, so that you don't have to worry about power outages taking down the city's phone system. Would our phones still work? Perhaps not, but they could forward those to our cellphones if need be. So, it does provide a little bit of redundancy there. The phone will still get answered, at least. So, for those reasons alone, just the redundancy and the fact that we'll have backup power, I think it's worthwhile looking at.
Going forward, costs of IT are going to continue to escalate, as they always do. Rather than not have partnerships with the county, I encourage having more partnerships with more departments with the county to cost share, to provide higher level of service, to be able to have redundancy and backup. I think that every part of this makes sense.
I would point out one last thing that I forgot to mention. I'm kind of flippantly, I don't know if you heard it, refer to Joel as our IT coordinator as well. He's our subcontractor that we use, and the county's been, sheriff's been very kind to let him even come over here during working hours and do some work when need be. When a phone issue comes up, I play the in-house IT guy. I'm a lawyer. I'm not an IT guy. Mayor laughs, and it's true. And I'll try and, I'll try and troubleshoot it, but nine times out of 10, with this phone system, the old one I could handle, this one is too complex for me, I could have to call up our third-party consultant. consultants and they do the work and then send us a bill for it. Joel is in-house. So there'll be a little cost savings there as well.
Yes, Alderman Snow.
Two questions. Are there any downfalls to changing? Doesn't sound like it is. Sounds like it could be cost-effective and there's only upsides to this whole thing. And the other is expandability as far as if for some reason, every location we have in the city, whether it's the street department and everything else, needs another phone. Does that pose an issue or is that just additional cost that would have occurred regardless?
Correct.
Yes, other phones can be added to the system and we simply pay for the phone costs associated with that. We still have several phones that we haven't used when we bought the system.
Anybody else? Yes, Frank.
I know, Pat Malloy, you said that you were putting a Band-Aid on it and it's no longer going to work, so we needed to do this right away. So when are you expecting to do this?
As soon as possible. Sheriff was telling me today, this morning actually, he was on a conversation and the phone dropped three times while he was on his conversation. So it's an issue. It really is. We're going to move as fast as we can with getting everything done. You know, like I said, we're kind of, we're waiting for the process and to get the okays from everybody and then, but we should be relatively good to go. Our timeline was middle of December, correct, was the approval and then the beginning of the year was when we were looking to start. And what you were referring to is we did put a software patch on our current phone system, I think it was four years ago, and they said it would probably last about two years. So we're two years past the patch and it's holding on. I keep equating it to driving a car with 200,000 miles on it. It might go for another 100,000. It might die tomorrow. We don't know.
Then entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Snow, second by Crawford. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Porter. So Becky, this 29,000 is, that's an initial cost then for the city?
Correct, because it's my understanding that we would be purchasing the total system and not doing the leasing, correct?
That is correct.
So out of that number, you're looking at almost half of that is public safety building anyway, which you would be on the hook for regardless. So it would just be, it's the other portion.
So figure about $15,000 then is the additional we're talking about?
Correct. When I look at the breakdown, this was on a different sheet. It looks like it's 48 phones in the public safety building and 37 for the city. So we're on the hook for half of PSB. So yeah, but maybe, yeah, maybe 16, 17,000 of that.
Frankly, if I recall, it's cheaper when we bought the last system four or five years ago and we're getting a new system.
Yeah, it's half the cost.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Snow.
So is this fair to say that the county campus is going to be on the system as well? It's not just the PSB?
That's correct.
The county's facilities. I would see highways on it?
Logan Avenue, Public Safety Building, Courthouse, Jail, City Hall, Public Defender, Fire Station 1, Fire Station 2, Highway Department, Animal Services.
Anything else? Yes, Alderman Frank.
I'm just wondering, how will these payments be paid? Like it's yearly, monthly, quarterly?
For the, do you know how the maintenance for the phone system?
Typically, the maintenance is an annual fee. It's a, what they refer to generally as a break fix. Something breaks, it'll be fixed, parts labor. Also, software upgrades as the manufacturer introduces new software each year. Those software revisions would be added to the telephone system. That's included as well.
And I'm afraid that 29,000 is the purchase price of the system. The manuses in that second column. The city cost, I guess if I'm reading this correctly, the city projected cost for manuses is $2,614 in year two.
Correct. Courtesy of manuses included.
I was just making sure. So the cost of the phones is not in any of these numbers for the county or the PSB?
It's directly above there. The city, the 29,000, and then the counties is right next to it.
I'm just making sure that the city's not being charged for phones in that number because we already have our phones.
Is that how it was? Hmm? It's for the service.
That I cannot, I just grouped it all. When I did this, this is just a group number.
So ours actually might be lower, the city's possibly, if the phones are included.
Are we talking about the capital expense initially to get this up and running?
Yes.
The phones themselves with the cost of the equipment. We're just making sure that the city's not paying.
The city won't be acquiring new telephone instruments.
Right.
It's new software and then there's other components.
I think the question was, is our new phones included in the quote for us even though we're not going to use them?
No.
Okay. That's not pretty. Anybody else?
I did not separate that. But then it would be lower? It would be lower.
Okay. Good question, Beck. It will be lower. They didn't separate out?
I did not separate that. I did not. I have no idea the phone cost on that per phone.
It's not going to be a lot.
200 times 37?
Yeah.
Whatever that is. I think it's 200. It might be, but the last one might be a little more.
Yeah, 37 phones at 200 is 7,400.
Okay. So it's 7,400 less. Good catch. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing not all those in favor, the motion that's now on the floor, 75 is saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds unanimous to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, appreciate it. Next up, we, at Alderman Snow's request, he wanted a review of the tax levy. So would you explain specifically what you wanted reviewed?
I just wanted to make sure we give everybody the time that they wanted to talk about it, discuss the possible options. One of the options at this point would be to let it go as it's stated right now, as it was published. The other is to amend, well, one of the things is, I want to get to logistics. Can we break out the library and the city as separate entities as far as voting on their individual merits per se? Or does it have to be all inclusive?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
If that's necessary to do. If we don't get approval of the initial motion, we can have two motions, whatever works the best for council. I think Ms. Tobin wanted to talk a little bit about our increased costs this coming year.
So even though we're just starting the budget process, so you know, I don't have a final budget to put before you as to how much ahead or under budget we're going to be as we move forward, but I was going to hand out just a few of the known expenses for 2021 that I want you to be aware of that add up to about a half a million dollars in expenses that we currently don't have budgeted, so.
Could you refresh everybody's memory and tell what the total ask for the city for the increase is?
So our total, we had asked for $5,91,251 with an additional 726,224 for the library. So this comes out to a 2.15% increase for each entity, which is, I have stuff all over the place. 107,000 for the general fund and let me see. Yeah, it was 107,000 for the general fund and a little over 15,000 for the library.
So percentage wise, we're going to cost a million dollars more and we're going to, we want to collect 107,000 more. That's math.
Basically, what I just had handed out to you just breaks down some of the expenses that you will not be, really aren't negotiable at this point for when you go through the budget process. You have union contracts that are out there that have been signed and approved with a 2.5% increase for fiscal year 21, which comes out to about $250,000 in additional payroll for next year that needs to be budgeted. Last week, you approved to increase the police and fire pensions, which is another 140,874. The third item, in your current budget, you approved the purchase of a mini pumper. In the current fiscal year, you have 125,000 coming out of the impact fee money with the understanding that the remaining 100,000 for next fiscal year to pay the remainder will come out of the general fund. So just those three items alone is 490,874 of additional expenses then was in your current budget. So just something to keep in mind as we go forward.
What did you base the percentage and some total ask on for the increase?
The increase for the levy? The increase for the levy is based on if the city was still under tax caps. So we use that as, we are home rule, we don't have to follow tax caps anymore if we choose not to. It has been your wishes and mine that we do not go above tax caps if we do not need to. So the increase was based on tax caps, which is the CPI for last year was 1.9% and then it's also the EAV and new property. So that's how we come up with that number.
This is not a voting issue tonight unless someone wants to make amendments, but we'll open up the floor to comments and questions. Alderman Snow.
So in the world of the city, just so, I didn't get a chance to be at last week's meeting when a lot of the library people mentioned stuff, but just wanted to reiterate that they do not have a path to earn extra money, unlike the city with the other taxes, whether it's the gas tax or the sales tax or gaming tax and things like that. So they are fairly stagnant. Last year, because of the way things ran, they did not get their typical 2% roughly increase. So now they're behind already and based on some of the comments that could occur, they may not wind up with their increases now. And I believe they've already expressed that they've got payroll issues, particularly with the number of people that are working on minimum wage, that it's going to be mandated that they wind up getting that, needing those funds in order to operate and somewhere the money's got to come from, so they'll either have to cut staff or services. So just, one of the reasons I was mentioning the breaking out of the two taxes so that we can vote on them separately is I believe if nothing else, we should definitely at least give the library the 2%. If nothing else, they really should revert back to 4% so that they can recoup what they missed last year and stay on track. You know, when you go to the store, the loaf of bread goes up. Everything goes up. The only thing that doesn't is gas. That fluctuates all over. But generically speaking, everything goes up and everybody, being that we have our biggest expense with all these entities is payroll and the cost of living for everybody goes up, that expense has to be passed on to the rest of the taxpayers in order to keep everybody moving forward at the same rate. I don't like raising taxes. I don't like to have to increase taxes. But again, I'll reiterate that the library doesn't have a stream of money that they can go against. They also don't have a huge reserve, unlike the school district. So I would encourage us, when next week comes to vote on this, that we would actually break the two entities out so that they're not tied together in that regards and then discuss the pros and cons of keeping up with the city. Again, Becky brings out all these expenditures and these continue to go on and on and unless you're going to deficit spend in that regards or lose headway in fixing the infrastructure across the river to make sure that the flooding is taken care of, we're just going to wind up paying Peter to pay Paul and we're never going to get caught up. So unfortunately, it is a life-giving thing that everybody winds up paying taxes and everybody's going to irk up just a little more. That's my spiel for the moment.
Well, and I have several of the folks from the library, we'd like to hear in your own words and thank you for reporting on their behalf. Amanda, do you want to come up? I just have them in a random fashion, so if there was a pecking order, I'm sorry. Amanda, aye. State your name and address for the record, please.
Amanda Pagani, age 15, Rowland Street in Bel Air. I live in Ward Street, represented by Alderman Snow, and I'm a bookkeeper at the Ida Public Sorry. I'm speaking on behalf of the library and its 19 employees and countless others who use the library and its services with or without a library card. The state mandated minimum wage increase will be an extra 275 an hour by the end of our next fiscal year. Approximately 40% of our staff make at or below the $11 an hour requirement. As the minimum wage increases, those with salaries above but close to the threshold will also expect their pay to be adjusted accordingly. This increase plus salary compression impacts all but two employees at the library. Salary compression is what occurs when the difference in pay is small regardless of experience, skills, or seniority. Almost 70% of the library's budget is used to cover our wages and benefits. Without the tax levy, we simply cannot support our staff. We understand that in today's world, there is intense competition for dollars and that we must continue to fight for our library funding. With that being said, I'll remind you like Alderman Snow just did, that we receive 85% of our income through property taxes. The libraries that surround us receive an average of 3% of their city's tax levy and we only receive 2. We face a unique pressure and cannot afford to lose the $15,000 that this levy increase would allow us. Remember that that figure compounds each year going forward and that minimum wage keeps increasing until 2025. For us, $15,000 is one part-time employee that wouldn't have to face a layoff. It's not having to close an hour earlier every day. $15,000 allows us to remain open on Saturdays. It pays most of our annual consortium fees. We value innovation, diversity, community engagement, and equal access, and we strive to be an information and leisure center that fosters community engagement and provides services for our diverse population. Without your support, we will not be able to continue to do so for our community. I would like to extend our offer from last week and invite you to go over our budget or spending if it's of any concern to you and come in and let us give you a tour of the library and sign you up for your library card. Our staff and patrons are mothers, fathers, children, taxpayers, just like the rest of us in this room. Please keep the Ida Public Library in mind when you are voting on the tax levy increase next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Sidney?
Aye.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Sidney Stenzland. I live at 311 North State in Genoa, Illinois. I am the early literacy specialist at Ida Public Library, so I'm speaking on behalf of the youngest patrons as well as their families and their caregivers. My role at the library is to advocate and educate on early literacy development for children under the age of six. I present storytime programs, parent education, local preschool outreach, and create resource materials available for checkout to help build literacy at home. We enrich the lives of hundreds of children each month. Since our last council meeting on the second, myself and my youth service team have shared stories with 142 children below the age of six alone. Every book that I read, every silly song or goofy dance that I do during storytime is a mindfully selected element in early literacy and language development. And I'm not only a teacher to young children, but a teacher to their parents and their caregivers as well. The library is a critical source of parent education and empowerment, arming both new and seasoned parents with ways to engage in meaningful literacy at home. We offer thousands of developmentally appropriate books for checkout. We host adult education programs such as Every Child Ready to Read and we We host adult education programs, such as Every Child Ready to Read, and we model ways that parents can engage with their child and prepare them to read and to learn. Research indicates that the critical period of language and early literacy development happens before a child's fifth birthday. Children miss out on a huge opportunities for learning if they reach kindergarten and are not prepared for school. As a previous, um, early childhood teacher, I cannot stress enough the importance of preparing children to read and to learn from birth. Infants and toddlers' brains are like sponges, and as a library, it is our job to provide children, as well as their parents and caregivers, with equal and easy access to tools that create success in learning. Our library's team is passionate about providing high-quality programs and offerings to every single family that walks through our door indiscriminately. We are accustomed to getting creative and doing our best with what we have. When faced with space constraints in our meeting room, we decided to increase the number of sessions that we offered in our programs rather than turn anybody away. Our local preschool outreach visits have allowed me the opportunity to build relationships and be a resource to early childhood educators in Belvidere, and share stories with over 560 preschoolers just since this August. We do this work because we believe that literacy is not a luxury, literacy is a right. And in order to answer the call of the families and educators that want the support for the young children in our families, we need the support of this tax levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda?
Hi.
Hi.
State your name for the record.
My name is, my name is Brenda Obalade, and these are two of my four children, Rachel and Thomas Obalade. My other two are, um, 10-month-old twins who are, 11-month-old twins who are at home. Um, we live at 1108 South Main Street here in Belvidere. Um, I came here today because I wanted to voice my support for the Ida Public Library. I cannot emphasize enough how big of an impact the library and their programs have had on me and my family throughout the past five years. We started going to their programming for children when my oldest child, Rachel here, was four months old. Um, we go every, every week at this point, and not only has it provided, um, tools for my children to learn how to, how to read and how to, um, and getting engaged in stories, it's also provided a community for me. My family moved here about seven years ago, and we didn't know anybody in the community. We moved here because I got a position as a school psychologist over in Rockford Public Schools, and my husband got into school at NIU. We didn't know anybody in Belvidere. Through the library, I have made the majority of my connections in this community, mostly with other mothers. Um, and I can't tell you how many other mothers who are staying at home, whether it be by choice or because they can't afford childcare, go there week after week seeking out this community. The programs that they offer in early literacy, as a school psychologist, I can attest to how strong the programming they offer. I can also tell you how much of a discrepancy we see in kindergarteners, whether their families have used tools like those that the library offers and have the resources at home to help teach their children these early skills. Um, but yes, I just wanted to show my support and also just say how I, I see this as such a small increase in the taxes to provide such important services in the community. Uh, my family is also multilingual, so I know at last week's meeting, it was brought up that the bilingual storytime specifically would be one of the things on the chopping block. Um, this, the bilingual story night on Fridays is one of those great opportunities in our community for monolingual and bilingual families to get a chance to interact with each other and really become part of one community. So, as you go forward with your vote for the tax levy, I really hope that you understand the impact that these services have on your community. Um, my daughter Rachel here had also wanted to say something, but she was a little, she said she was too shy to speak, so she wrote a letter that she wanted to say for how, for how much the library means to her. Okay? She wrote, "I love my library because I love its beautiful decorations for holidays. I like its cool books, especially its storytime. I like the interesting brick, brick pattern on the walls and the beautiful gardens in the summertime. I like all the different shades of brown. I like the elevator for mommy's stroller and the stairs for when the babies are older. I like the silence of the upstairs. All the kind librarians. I like meeting new friends at storytime. I like all the cool colors of the cloths at storytime. I like all the storytimes: Spanish, alphabet soup, sensory, and normal." The end, by Rachel.
Good job, Rachel. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we have Mike. How are you tonight?
Good.
Good. State your name and address for the record, please, Mike.
My name is Mike Pagani. I live at H-15 Berlin in Belvidere. First, I wanna say I don't like paying taxes. I don't like spending money. I'm embarrassing about it. But my two-year-old daughter loves reading, so much so that 20 books a night sometimes just isn't enough. If I were to satisfy her desire to read for hours on end and make sure it's just not the same books over and over, as she knows, I would go broke. One children's book costs about $10. Instead, I pay $64.46 a year for my library card. My children are not old enough to go to school, so they rely on the services the library offers for socialization, early literacy, and educational. My family attends as many events as we can, which are all free. We take advantage of Family Fridays, Storytimes, baby prom, which is a thing, movies, and a summer reading program. We would otherwise have to spend $90 a year on a family membership to the Discovery Center and take many trips to rock. This year, we were able to take them trick-or-treating, trick-or-treating, and a trucker tree instead of going out in the snow on Halloween. My daughter participates in the Ida Ready Readers Program, which is helping her get prepared for preschool. Having events in the evenings and on weekends ensures that I have time to participate in the activities with my children that I would otherwise miss out on since I work full-time. Our favorite activity is Saturday storytime, which we never miss. We hear about it if we do. I use the library every day by ta, every day by taking advantage of audiobooks. This has afforded me a new way to enjoy reading since I have such a busy schedule. I can listen to books wherever I go. I can pay Audible $15 a month and only be able to get one book. Instead, the library allows me unlimited audio checkouts. I save $180 a year on an Audible subscription, and now we pay just over $60 for my library card. I support the proposed tax levy increase because I understand that you get what you pay for. I appreciate the programs, materials, and support that the library gives my family, and I realize that without them, we would be missing out on so much. Our library is worth much more than the amount that I pay for our taxes.
Thank you. So, anybody else decide they wanted to come up and say something? Okay, council, any other questions, uh, further discussion? Yes. Alderman Frank.
Well, I men, they mentioned a lot about, um, school programs, and I was wondering if the school helped them with any of these programs.
Do you have a working relationship with the schools that, do they help fund you or provide resources?
No, we try to help them as much as we can, but the, um, the schools have very different, um, structures. They have one librarian for all schools, and so getting full ones are difficult, but we do, as much, we actually are working on, um, the economic and macro changes for like that.
But the words out, obviously, that you're getting all these people to come in for the early learning program, is that from the schools?
What I do is I go to those locations. Some of them are through your school district, others are private daycare preschool centers. The work that I do is to not only present the stories to the kids, but also help those educators see ways that they can appropriate literacy into their classrooms, because they got all kinds of things that they're doing, um, in terms of education and childcare. So, the fu, there's no funding that's happening with them, this is just a service we provide those children and those teachers.
So, there's no teamwork whatsoever, you're all on your own?
Um, there's collaboration in terms of us giving them information on programs that we do. The collaborative effort would be for the benefit of the library, to be able to give them access to whatever types of programs or issues that the families do have.
Additional questions, comments concerning the tax levy for this evening's discussion? Alderman Stevens.
I had a question. Citizens of Belvidere, does a library card cost us, or is it? Okay, 'cause I was confused when they were talking about. But I mean, I thought it sounded like you had to pay an additional, additional fee for the card, but the taxpayer does not have to pay for a card then.
Does Poplar Grove, and they don't pay an additional fee for a card?
They have to pay out of pocket, it's not come out of their tax bill. It gets paid at the end. So, they can get a library card, they put it to the library, and we would, um, look at their tax bill, um, at their taxable value, and, um, figure out how much they went owe for their library card. So, they pay the same rate that we do, but it's ours as resident of Belvidere, we pay it through our tax bill, and they pay it out of pocket.
'Cause I know a friend of mine that lives in Bellmar, it was gonna cost him like $280 to get a card.
And it would've been the same if they had the same house with the same value, and they would've considered it. They're just paying it, yeah.
So, would it make sense to make it affordable to everybody, to say, everybody that's outside the city could pay $50, and how much money could that bring in? Yeah, and if they can't afford $280, but maybe they can afford 50.
If I may address your comment about the Bellmar, I live in Garnet Field, near Bellmar. I pay $255 for the library annually. So, your friend who lives in Bellmar, who is asked to pay 200 and some, is equivalent to what I pay, what comes out of my property taxes as a resident of Garnet Field. The price that is paid for this library card is based on a percentage of your property value. So, if you live in a more expensive property, you're going to pay a little bit more. If you're living in a lesser priced property, you're presenting a bit of your less. So, it is act, actually quite.
So, I think there's clarification that you might appreciate. Part of the property tax levy, the library gets a percentage. That's how they pay the lion's share of their expenses. It's not, the cost of the library card is the share that they get to support the entire library operation. It's not they, you pay that for the card. Okay, well, I just wanna make sure.
That if more people could ante up and give money for a card that maybe can't afford $280 or however much it would cost, instead of going to have to go pay Barnes &amp; Noble for a book, they could come to Ida.
Okay, it's based on an equitable distribution of property value. So, then what you're saying is, if you don't have the money to pay your equitable share based on the value of your home, then you should get a discount if you can't afford it? I, I'm trying to understand what you're, what you're saying.
I'm saying, if, who's, $50 from, um, many people would help this problem, instead of some people saying, "No, I'm not gonna pay $280 for a li, library card."
Alderman Snow.
The problem is, right now, you pay X number of dollars to get a library card, whether you want one, use it, or not. So, is that fair for somebody who pays $250 worth of taxes to the library, that somebody else who lives outside the city limits that doesn't have to pay the tax, that only needs it for one year maybe, or two, pays $50 each year, and they're saddled with it for the rest of the existence of the home?
I'm looking for ways that we can help bring in money.
Are you have programs for low-income families to help them with library programs?
Well, all our programs are free. You never need a library card to participate in it.
Okay, so if they come to the library, no charge. Ryan?
You need to come to checkout material. You could, you could pay $5 a year for a computer card, coming to your computer every single day, all day, if you wanted to. You don't think you're really, you need a library card for, in checkout material?
And it's based on an equitable calculation, 'cause they don't, okay, okay?
Thinking of a way to bring in revenue.
Okay, anybody else? All right, moving along. Under D, we have a review of the motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance imposing a 3% tail on the sa, sale tax on the sale of cannabis products, and direct the city attorney and city planner to process a text amendment restricting cannabis dispensary sales to the general business and planned business districts as a special use, and license growers of cannabis to an appropriate industrial zoning district. These ordinances, note, ordinances, they're separate ordinances, will come to the full city council in early 2020. Would you like to speak, or do you wanna entertain questions, Mike?
I believe Alderman Braden wanted to bring this back for, for the discussion of which ordinance or which part of the motion, I'm not sure.
Um, while I went back and watched, uh, the, uh, the last, uh, where Gina spoke on this, um, and I have an impression that you wanna treat this the same as alcohol, is that correct?
I threw out multiple options that the council could consider, 'cause I don't want to publish one set of languages, go through the public hearing, come to city council and have it drastically changed, and then have to go back for another public hearing. So, that's why I wanted some guidance. But I gave out multiple options. You could treat it like a liquor license, where it's permitted, but there's self, you know, there's, you have to be so many feet away from certain land uses, you have to be so many feet away from each other, stuff like that. So, there's built-in conditions. You could treat it as a special use, case-by-case basis. You could also just say, "We don't want this at all in Belvidere." I mean, there's, there's multiple ways. So, I just kinda threw out all those options in order to see what the council thought, and it was my understanding after that, that meeting was that the council wanted, uh, do special uses so that neighboring businesses would be aware of it, and probably have conditions that are similar to the kind of language we have in the liquor code as far as setbacks and numbers and stuff like that.
Okay, um, I just, I was wondering, both you and the city attorney, did you think the special use maybe wasn't a good idea?
No, I said that it was an option not to do the special use. In one respect, it is easier for, uh, both the planning department, the city council, as well as the planning zoning department, if you built in significant restrictions as a base code that they'd have to comply with before being able to get a special use, uh, so you wouldn't have to do the special use process. What it does, what that does is takes any guesswork out of the equation, eliminates the public hearing requirement before the planning zoning commission, but also serves the purpose, however, because you have to build in all those restrictions on the front end, uh, that it might make it more difficult for an applicant to actually get approval. It also takes away, by not doing the special use process, the ability for the neighbors to have comment upon the application if they wanted to. So, for example, um, right now, with respect to, well, let's see, a, a bar requires a special use for indoor commercial entertainment, but, uh, grocery store, if somebody wanted to open a grocery store, um, in a, in an area, as long as they met the base zoning, complied with all of our codes, there'd be no notice to send to the neighbors, and the first notice they'd get of the grocery store going in would be construction. Um, if you want to have the ability for those neighbors to weigh in on whether or not they want cannabis, uh, dispensaries in proximity to their homes, then you'd go to the special use process.
Is that clear?
Yeah, so I guess I just wondered what the consensus was, if we should do a special use.
What my understanding was that evening, and perhaps I was misunderstanding, my understanding from that evening was, number one, we're looking at allowing cannabis dispensaries within the general business and planned business districts as a special use. So they had to be one of those two districts, and they'd have to apply for a special use. It'd be up to Gina to, with my assistance, to come up with what requirements would be in place to meet the conditions that's special use for, of course, your approval later on, when the ordinance has come before you. But that's what my understanding was, was special use in those two districts.
Counsel? Yes, Alderman Porter?
Well, I would say we definitely don't want any dispensaries in a residential area, so we want to make sure we eliminate any possibility of that. Well, that's what this does. You know, it's residential's not in there. It's planned business and general business.
Alderman Snow?
But just one point, though. The, there are residences above a lot of the shops, there are a number of the shops in the downtown district.
That's in the central business district, which was not included. We kept it to the general and planned because of the lack of the upstairs residences was one of the factors.
So it's not in the overlay district directly downtown?
Correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Well, there was another thing. I was kind of wondering if maybe we should allow it in any central business district. And I just, I thought maybe we should hear more opinions. It kind of just kind of fell by, I thought, at that committee meeting.
If I may, I will reiterate my opinion, that we should not allow dispensaries, period. And on your desk this evening, I think there was this. I don't know if all of you had a chance to read it. I just, it, Love's Park voted down the idea of dispensaries. Everybody make a comment? Alderman Porter?
Yeah, I, I've had a little change of heart in this myself. I'm, I'm not for having dispensaries at all, but I was under the impression from the initial material that we had, that we didn't have a choice if somebody wanted to put one down in town here. But according to this, it looks like we do have a choice to vote it down altogether then. Am I correct?
No, I think I was pretty, I thought it was clear. I apologize if it wasn't. My initial memos, you have no ability to restrict private consumption. That's allowed statewide. We cannot prohibit that. The default in the state is that dispensaries are allowed. However, municipalities have the ability to say, by ordinance, dispensaries are not allowed. That requires you adopt an ordinance effectively prohibiting dispensaries within the corporate boundaries of the city of Belvidere. If you don't adopt that ordinance, then the default is they are allowed, at which point I recommend you adopt a zoning code text amendment, so that they're placed in the appropriate zoning districts. Which is why we got to the point we're at tonight, is that the council, at least the majority of the councils seem to be in favor of going forth allowing dispensaries, but regulating by zoning.
So what do you need to know so you can do the adequate work to bring forward to the council the appropriate ordinances or lack of there?
Well, the, the current motion is to have us draft an ordinance imposing a 3% tax, assuming that dispensaries are allowed, because that's what the default is, as a second ordinance, regulating them to the general and planned business districts as a special use. If this council wishes to do something else, wishes to eliminate the special use, wishes to expand the zoning districts that they're allowed in, or wishes to prohibit them altogether, we need to know that really tonight, or by the next Monday night, so that we can modify the motions accordingly.
Your honor?
Yes, Alderman Snow?
So while I'm not a fa- a fan of this whole cannabis thing, and I voted no for allowing it to proceed in the city dis- city limits, I think it's worth the discussion, because we're always trying to promote businesses in the downtown overlay district, the downtown section here, whether or not we want to exclude that section. I realize there's residents above it, but we also have numerous bars and other things over those same residents. So, and the, the fact that this is a business that is selling the stuff, not for the purpose of consuming it on-site, so it's not like a bar where you consume on-site and carry into the street. These are just making purchases. It's like, lack of the term, going to Walmart or something like that, buying groceries. So I don't know. It would be interesting to have a straw vote, is the number of people, if we go forward, that would want it to be available to the downtown overlay district.
I do want to make one thing very clear to the council. You need to do something in the short term, because obviously this is legal on January 1. We're not going to see a dispensary probably within the first year, because we were not chosen, Boone County was not chosen as the recipient of one of the initial licenses. So it'd require existing medical facility to choose the area to locate. However, if the council were to choose to not allow dispensaries at all within the city, and adopt a wait-and-see attitude to see how they play out in other communities, there's nothing to prevent you from then, in a year or two, saying, "Okay, now we're going to allow dispensaries." Once you allow them, it's kind of hard on ring that bell, because once they're in business, it might be able to prevent future ones, but the ones that are here, you can't really unring that bell. I'm not really trying to muddy the waters at all, but that is always an option you could take, is a wait-and-see approach, by prohibiting them now and then sometime in the future allowing them.
So by a straw vote, we're going to show hands, that is not a motion in a second, to understand whether or not, if positions have changed on the council. So I'll start out. It would be my position to have the city attorney draw up an ordinance that says we do not want to allow dispensaries, and I'll vote aye on that. So we got one, two, three, four, five. So it's five, four. Okay, so I guess we're going to allow dispensaries. So who wants to do what Gina said, or what Kip recommended was having a special use? So show of hands that want to require a special use. Okay, so who wants to allow them not in the central business district, but the general business district? Okay. Who doesn't want to allow dispensaries downtown?
I'm confused where we're at.
Okay, I'm not. So who wants to allow dispensaries anyplace but with conditioning upfront on setbacks and restrictions? Okay.
So you want to allow them in the...
Maybe marching orders.
Wait, you want to allow them in the residential district? So he just said, he just voted for that.
We included, we excluded residential districts from the very beginning.
Oh, I'm sorry, because you just, you just said...
No, I said the central business district, or any of the districts downtown. We don't have residential districts downtown.
Yeah, we do, but okay.
The people live above businesses. So where is your clarification?
So what you're asking for is to allow dispensaries in the planned industrial, heavy industrial, general industrial, planned business, general business, and central business districts.
Is that a correct understanding of the...
So anyplace above residential? Is that what you're saying? Anyplace above residential?
Show of hands.
That's the way I'd like it, yes.
Well, show of hands.
I'm sure she does.
Gina?
So I don't have my zoning code in front of me, because I had no idea what the discussion was going to be tonight. I didn't know why I was getting brought back. But for heavy industrial and general industrial, keep in mind, your base zoning doesn't allow retail in those districts. Those are very high semi-traffic areas, because of the nature of the businesses. You don't really want pedestrians in there to go shopping. You kind of leave it to employees in the semi-traffic. Retail is allowed in the planned industrial district, but I would recommend if you're going to open up marijuana dispensaries, not by special use, but just based on built-in conditions like the liquor code, that's the kind of vibe I'm getting from you guys, leave it to those districts that already allow retail. Otherwise, it's going to be, retail's not allowed, except for this kind of retail. And then it, you know, that kind of starts complicating things. So that would be, as your planner, my suggestion is, don't do heavy and general industrial. But except for the growing, because actually those are, you're looking at 50 to 100,000 square foot buildings. That kind of infrastructure belongs in the industrial districts.
Let's not muddy the waters with that, because that hasn't been, I don't think that was an issue at all, the, the raising of crops. The reality is, if you are allowed in all the industrial, all your business districts, they'll be the most expansive use of any use that you have in the city of Belvidere for marijuana. I, frankly, I think what you're looking at, what, I'm not the planner, Gina is. I'm just the city attorney. But my guess is you really want it in your, in your business districts. If you want in central, we can draft it that way. General and planned business districts, that's all of your business districts in the city of Belvidere, I believe. Is there one more?
You also have neighborhood business and neighborhood office. Those I'd recommend against as well. Those, your neighborhood districts are the ones that are usually your random, randomly zoned commercial property in the middle of a residential area, because they're supposed to be for low-scale, almost kind of like a at-home business type thing. But they are usually surrounded by residential. So if you want to keep it out of your residential areas, you'd want it out of your neighborhood office and neighborhood business as well. Which brings it back to your planned business, your general business, which are your major business areas. Planned industrial, you know, is kind of a half-industrial, half-business. And then you can discuss central business. One of the reasons why I left central business out is just getting feedback on Facebook and the comments on online news articles, which I know are never a good consensus, because people usually only go on there to complain, is that there, people want to see growth in your downtown with more of the boutique kind of shops and more businesses, less of the gaming, less of the bars, stuff like that. They feel like we're pretty saturated on that end. So that's one of the reasons why I initially left it off, was just based on that feedback I get when I, when I go snooping online to see how people feel.
Chief?
And I understand the intent of having a dispensary is for sales only. I think that if anybody's been to a city that has recreational marijuana, well, we all have experienced that that's not for sales only. Anybody that goes in and buys it has the potential for using it in and around the, the streets, sidewalks, and exposing other community members to it as well. So, you know, if you have it in the downtown area, chances are it's going to be used in the downtown area.
I have a question. How far would it have to be from schools, churches, daycares, and libraries, according to your zoning plan?
That, well, it was originally discussed as being a special use, so I hadn't really looked at that stuff yet. I would definitely mirror the liquor code, or the council could even increase it a little bit, but at the very minimum, it would be the same setbacks as the liquor code, which...
I believe it's 100 feet.
I believe it's 100 feet.
How far does secondhand smoke travel, even though you're not supposed to walk around smoking in public?
No idea.
Okay.
I think that's going to depend on factor of wind and maybe some other considerations. But with marijuana, I think it's a pretty distinct odor. I know, you know, walking around cities that have recreational marijuana currently, and you just walk around and you can just smell it. And you look around, you may not necessarily see the people that are smoking it, but you know it's there.
So do we have, do we have a direction now for Gina to follow to, and to help Mike write up what we're going to write up?
Well, I think the original motion seems to be what we're looking at.
I believe some of the aldermen wish to expand it to central business and perhaps planned industrial or even further.
I'm under the impression, just from the straw votes, that we wanted to eliminate the special use and allow it in the central business. Is that correct?
Show of hands.
Not really downtown.
Show of hands, central business. So it's lost. It's four and four, I vote no.
Four and four, there's nine here.
Was it four and four?
I thought I saw four hands go up.
Well, four wanted in central business, so that would mean the other four were nay, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I didn't realize Marshall wasn't back there.
Is that correct?
Because central business basically says State Street down here.
Lincoln and Logan, basically.
Yeah.
It's Alderman Stevens, it's the dark red behind you on the zoning map, so it's basically your downtown.
Yeah, it really wouldn't went up there, but maybe more out, like, past like McDonald's and that type of business.
Yep, that's your general business.
That's the general. I'd prefer it in the general business district with zoning kind of like bars, if not just a little bit more.
Yeah, well, keep in mind, bars are a special use.
So Alderman Braden's question was actually in two parts. One was central business, which apparently, the majority of the council, including the mayor, are not in favor at this point. The second part was requiring the special use. Majority of the council wished to require special use, similar to what we do for a bar, where you want to, not required. So I guess those in favor requiring the special use, raise your hands. If you treat it the same as a bar would be. Yes?
Why your question real quick?
I'm sorry.
So treat it the same as a bar. I'm totally in favor of that. What are your score? I mean, are the sort of different?
Yeah, and this is where it can get confusing. You have your liquor code, which is the sale of alcohol, has certain setbacks 100 feet from, you know, uses. And that would be your bars, that would be your restaurants that serve liquor, and that would be your retail liquor stores, including like gas stations and stuff. They all have to adhere to the liquor code. Now, your zoning code classifies liquor stores as retail, so they just meet retail. Your restaurants are retail. Your standalone bars, where that's their primary focus is onsite consumption instead of sales, that is a special use. So if you dispensary, like the liquor code, which is permitted, but with established setbacks, or you can treat it like a bar, which is the liquor code in addition to a special use. Does that clarify it? Kind of? Welcome to my world.
[inaudible]
We're both in favor of treating dispensaries like the liquor stores and with the same setbacks.
So now require a special use?
Can I ask for a show of hands for a special use, and then a show of hands for no special use, just so that I am completely clear, because I'm seeing a lot of mixed faces?
One, two, three, four. No special use. One, two, three, four. You get to vote.
Okay, no special use, yay. All right, so it's five, four, special use.
Now, and I hate to throw a blanket on the mayor, this is here for discussion purposes. It was actually tabled at council. So any amendments you want to make, was actually presented, would be done at, at council. At this point, when it comes up at council, I'll basically be reminding the council at that point that there was, seemed to be consensus tonight to, I guess, require the special use at this point. And to allow it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gina, because I'm not sure I got this right, but allow it in the general business, the planned business, the central business, not central business, all right, general planned...
And planned industrial.
And planned industrial. So we're going to have planned industrial to it. So that at council, one of the aldermen can make the appropriate motion to amend. And really, this motion's pretty meaningless, because I'll come back to an ordinance form anyway. This is directory to tell us what to draft. Still has to go through the entire planning and zoning process, public hearings before the planning and zoning commission, and come back to you sometime in 2020 in ordinance form. So you're all going to get at least two more cracks at this apple. But so at least we can correct the record for Monday night.
Is that our understanding?
Gina, on that, on that map over there, can you point to where, generally speaking right now, where the planned industrial, general, and planned business?
Looking at the lower left-hand corner, all that red, I believe it is.
So your, can everyone hear me? Okay. Your planned industrial is your favorite corporate park, which is where... Your planned industrial is your neighbor, corporate park, which is where the Speedway is. Down path, Chrysler, there's one vacant lot over there, and then, off maneuver in the older industrial area.
Gina, can I interrupt for one second? Which begs the question, are your industrial partners, like Magna and Chrysler, going to want a dispensary in close proximity to their plants where people go to at lunch?
No, no, they don't.
I've already had that conversation.
There was, but what I was told when I first came out here is Penny Road Lot, next to Town Hall and industrial park, that's vacant, I already asked why that wasn't involved with the special park. They told me someone wanted to put a truck stop there. Chrysler objected fiercely, because they didn't want the liquor sales being directed from the street from their plant. So yes, your industrial, you may not appreciate that. But your general business is basically from Little Caesar, all the way to the end of town, and your cluster by Logan and Genoa. Then your planning business is the Walmart development, oh yeah, and the McDonald's, yes, the market. All right, your planning business is your Walmart development, your development, and has the Sherrill's Pizza Store, Logan House, and then Logan Square, and just, anything that is up there right now. You like, said you should be up there, it's pretty underdeveloped. And then out by Chaco, and then Mark's Office, that's your plant business. Oh, then you have some undeveloped land business out by Shiller's Pizza.
Your honor, so, so based on that map, I would guess most of the people that are for this would just assume have it show up in the red and the pink, and not have it downtown, which is a dark, dark red, and, and eliminate the planned industrial.
I don't think anybody really knows what they want. So go ahead and keep discussing until you figure it out, so you can give direction to the city attorney on how to write the ordinances. Alderman Bird.
Just like Alderman Ratcliffe just said, based on the discussion tonight, based on the discussion tonight, I don't see any amendments being made to this motion.
Okay. Has everybody had their say? Alderman Porter?
Well, not to muddy the water here, but-
More than I'm done.
There was something, somebody said to me, at some point here, about the 3% tax, if this does go through, we might want to think about maybe making it more in line with what the normal tax is for like bars and such, instead of going with the maximum tax, which might be more fair.
The state of Illinois specifically, all right, the state is getting their pound of flesh. The state limits the max that we can charge at 3%, which is in addition to whatever regular sales tax that's collected by the state. The state's getting their pound of flesh, they're taxing the grower, then they're taxing the transporter, then they're taxing the, the end distillery as well. So they're getting three layers of tax on this, we're only getting the one. My personal recommendation, frankly, is if the state's authorized it, and not that I'm a huge fan of syntaxes, because it's a horrible way to try and balance a budget, but you might as well take it, because I can tell you right now that there is going to be an impact upon your police department with additional calls for service and additional work that they're going to have to do, that, you know, you might as well get what you can get out of it, if you're going to allow it.
Yes, chief?
You know, as I said before, I get it, the, the tax revenue is attractive, and I don't agree with it, I understand it, from the state's perspective, they're broke, they're trying to find a remedy to balance a budget, and they decided to sell drugs to do it. And that's exactly what we're doing, is we're bringing drugs into our community. And now, the justification that we're using to do that, we want a lesson, knowing, and maybe I didn't do a good job explaining the impact or potential impact it could have just on society, you know, as a whole. The one statistic, and really only statistic, that anyone should really take into consideration is the potential for somebody driving under the influence and the increase in fatalities based on that. How much tax revenue, even if it's just one life that's taken, how much tax revenue is, is worth that life? Because I can't think of a dollar amount. Thanks.
So are you clear as to what you need to bring back?
If there was a care for Alderman Bird's comment that amendments are necessary, yes. Well, that was a- That's what will be before you Monday night, and if anybody wants to make a change, we can go through this again.
That was a very circular discussion. Before I ask for adjournment, a couple of things, some good news. We got a letter from the IDOT today that they are going to mill and resurface U.S. Business 20 out there by Van Epp's Drive and Blackhawk Bank. And that will come back to y'all, because we'll have to approve that process, they're going to do that fairly soon. The other thing is, based on the presentations that were made for Alderman candidates, I would ask you this. If you have preferences or want to talk, I will take phone calls tomorrow and Wednesday concerning your ideas and thoughts about the presentations this evening, and I will make a decision Wednesday night, and it'll be in the packets on Thursday. So hearing that, I'm, that's all I have tonight. Yes, sir?
Just one question. Brent, I've been asked by people, and I've seen people moving leaves to the curb, are we still picking up leaves?
We are still picking up leaves, we'll be picking up leaves probably till, who knows when, as long as the smoke stays away, we'll be picking leaves up, because if you drive around, you'll notice there's still a lot of oak trees that haven't even dropped any leaves yet, so.
I was asked, so I said I would ask.
Yeah, right now, currently, we're on the south side this week.
And I know some of you have my cell phone number, it'd probably be more direct if you just called the city number, and if I happen to be in a meeting or something, then you put it in my voicemail, what your preferences are, so I can sit and listen to those as the day goes by. So, okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the festivities this evening. My Alderman Frank, second, my Alderman Ratcliffe, all those in favor signify as saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for your participation tonight. We are now adjourned.